I make a motion that we end the executive session, return to the regular meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, first case, Shival?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Lino Schiretta, partner with the firm Malte Bonn, Collin and Frank. I know I'm not Michael Serignano, he couldn't make it this evening, so I've been retained to help the applicant Fiddlehead's cooking studio. Just, and I know I sent an email to this effect to the town. There was a deck, a patio rather, that was constructed without approvals. We had submitted action, Mr. Serignano had submitted a letter last month stating that he was going on behalf of Fiddlehead, withdrawing that application because we were going to remove the deck, the patio rather, and the fence. So we were going to withdraw tonight's application and have the deck removed and apply for demolition permit to get that done. So I just wanted to let's say for the record, I know I sent an email and a letter to Mr. Trifiletto just stating that we were going to be requesting that this be withdrawn this evening from consideration from the zoning board because as I speak of my client, she has this business, Fiddlehead, that's been now in operation for about a year, quite successful business. It was a special permit in area variance that your board granted back in April 2018, and it's been quite successful. Growing pains, she built a patio and a fence, not realizing the required approval. So realizing that, the client has told me, look, I'm just going to remove it and withdraw this application. So respectfully, we'd like to withdraw the application this evening and apply for a demo permit.
As it relates to the special permit...
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I don't know how familiar you are with this. We've had numerous neighbors who have spoken in opposition, others that have endorsed this enterprise. I was wondering if you are up to speed on...
I am.
That one neighbor in particular that has voiced his concerns.
I am, and I'll speak briefly to that because I know where you're getting it, Mr. Chairman. So yes, the neighbor, there have been letters in the record this evening, just so you're all aware, there are two letters in support. They couldn't be here, these neighbors tonight, but hopefully if we ever have to come back before your port again, they will be here. And then we have another neighbor that also sent the letter in opposition, which I believe is the individual you're speaking of. So yes, this, when you say folks in opposition, when I looked at the record on here, at least the paper record, I noticed it's the one neighbor that's been lodging the complaints against Fiddlehead School. So just by way of background, I went through the record, I went through your special permit, which I knew it took a long time to get, and you were very thorough in putting conditions in there and going and granting the variances in the special permit. We're not going to sit here and say, you know, we did nothing wrong, because we did acknowledge, and I have my client here, Renana Shival, this evening, your special permit condition and for a group institution in that zone permits five, five pupils for the school. There was a point in time last July when the building inspector came out, and there were, I believe, nine pupils that were in the school. Spoke to the client about it, that's been corrected. Since we've noticed that in July, she's made efforts, and now since, I want to say since January of this year, there's been five students. There's always been eight classes because eight classes per week per your special permit. That's been no violation of that, nor have we received. There was a notice of violation that we received back in July 23rd of 2019, which talked about first, the patio that was being constructed and the fence. And then there was a complaint from this neighbor about the pupils and the classes that they exceeded eight per week. I will submit to you that there have always been eight classes per week. Renana has three children, three girls, okay, ranges from 13, make sure I have this, 11 and eight, okay? Just because she has her special permit for her business, which she cannot operate prior to 10:00 AM, she starts at 10:00 AM. She has a family, she has, you know, three daughters. Because she obtained a special permit for her business doesn't preclude her from having her friends at her house, kids coming over their house, or congregating at her house. And I know, and I took exception to some of the letters that I read from this neighbor, and some of the photos that we're taking, complaining about people at the house. And, you know, she has a right to enjoy her property, she has a right to operate her business. Granted, she did not have five pupils at one time, and she's corrected that. But to call my client a liar and make disparaging remarks in the record, again, this is not for this board, and I take exception to that. That being said, it's our...
Could I just clarify? So are you saying that as of January of this year...
Correct.
...all corrective actions have been taken so that from that point forward...
That's correct.
...there would not be any violations of the special permit?
That is correct.
Can I just ask our building department, are you aware of any violations that have occurred since the new year?
We have not been to the site to witness that, but there's been claims of violations from Mr. Ruckel.
Since January.
Since January.
And I will submit to you that some of those complaints, again, it's her, it's her home as well, okay? The detached garage where the business takes place, I was there, there are five seats, but, and I saw these pictures that he took of the site, you know, just like you all can have parties at your house, you want to have Sunday football, launch, and people could come over and park in her driveway and congregate and have and enjoy her home. So again, to have someone say that, well, these are kids here and they're students, so you're in violation of the special permit, again, I take exception to that because she's been operating since, and I believe it was December where there was another email, I believe December 3rd, that Mr. Ruckel had sent to Renana with respect to this. Again, there are a lot of kids at the house, but I will submit to you on the record that I'm staying tonight, that we have complied now with the special permit, there are only five pupils, there's always been eight classes, and they do not start before 10:00 AM, is that correct?
That's right.
So, and...
Sure. If you could just, please, for the record.
This is very emotional for me because...
I'm sure it is. Take your time.
First of all, I do this, I run this business as, it's something I love doing because I love teaching children about food, and I think it's very important. In no way did I want to bother anyone, or it was never my intention to build a huge corporation of having many classes and a lot of children. I did, you know, I have, you know, I made a mistake, and I did have more than five children in the past. I understand that I have to, you know, keep it at five children, and I will do so.
So given your original intention...
Yes.
And given the fact that the number of students had expanded, let's say, last year...
Yeah.
Do you feel confident that, or comfortable, running the business, given the limitations as they've been outlined in the existing special permit?
Yes.
And I ask that question because if we're going to look at this more carefully, more closely, we would want to hear from you as it relates to things that are creating an issue for you, or just, if nothing else, a request that you wish to make to be evaluated by the board in terms of numbers, hours starting, hours ending, so on and so forth. But I think you said last month, and I think you're saying again, that those limitations that exist in the special permit are limitations that you can live with, and you have no interest in asking to exceed them in any way, shape or form. Is that right?
That's correct.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Anyway, we want to be, sorry, Renana and her family want to be good neighbors, and I went to the site, and I know where Mr. Ruckel's house is in relation to, and I encourage you, if you haven't seen the facility, it's beautiful. The family spent thousands of dollars getting that facility, and that out, I'll call it the detached garage, up to the way it looks today. I encourage you to take a look at it, and if you see where the complaining neighbor is situated in relation to this, again, it was very impressionable to me when I saw it, and I actually walked the site. Again, and the neighbors who are immediately adjacent to the school are in support of this. So again, we understand there were issues. You've heard it tonight, they've been corrected. And again, as far as I'm concerned, the special permit, you all spent a lot of time going through that, and there are conditions that the client can't comply with. So again, we respectfully request this evening that we're going to withdraw that application for the legalization of the patio and the fence, we'll remove it, and hopefully that will be all for this application, and hopefully, you know, with the building inspector, when they come by and look, you'll see that it is operating in accordance with that special permit.
One other issue that, or maybe there are other issues, but one other issue that I'd like to hear your comment about has to do with water consumption, and what you're aware of as it relates to the current water consumption by the operation, and whether or not you have heard about impacts as it relates to neighbors, or just generally aware of any impacts, perhaps as it relates to this property also.
I read that, that comment, and I will say, in terms of the water with respect to this board, again, there's been no empirical data, and I went back and looked at this record, and even today, there's no empirical data showing anything about water being affected here. I mean, this is a kitchen, and with a stove, and a normal-sized kitchen that you would have in any one of our homes. So to make that accusation that, again, without any detailed scientific or empirical backup, I just think is far-reaching and really not an issue for this board, particularly with your area of variance and special permit criteria. Again, we don't think it's an issue, and did you want to add anything to that, Renana, about the water?
I mean, we, we didn't have any water issues when we spoke to the, you know, surrounding neighbors. They said that this, the water issue has, you know, it's, it's been a problem for years and years. We never personally had any issues, so I really can't comment on that. I don't know.
I think it's fair to say, just based on the record, that it's not the school causing any purported water issues by the neighbor.
Okay. I take back what I said before, one other issue. So the issue of visibility of the address as it relates to attendees.
Right.
Last month, the applicant spoke about perhaps putting a larger, different sign up. You may have read that, again, one particular neighbor felt that that would commercialize the area, and so he did not think that was a good idea. That's his opinion. Are you aware of people having difficulty finding the location, and is there anything that can be done short of commercializing the area that might improve that circumstance so that this individual's driveway perhaps is not impacted by attendees?
So at the moment, we don't have any sign. I don't have a permit to put any size sign. We just have our address and something decorative to show that it's, you know, might be Fiddlehead Ferns, but it's not any writing, just, we can absolutely try to put something larger, just the street address.
So today, it's just the number 143, or is it something else?
Yes, that's just our mailbox with the, with the address on it.
Okay.
We don't have any type of sign.
And in your estimation, is it something that people might have trouble recognizing in terms of the address?
I mean, it's just like any other address on the street. It doesn't stand out.
Right.
I will say though, that the, to the extent that, again, having driven there at this time of night, it is lit. So I know other homes, as you're going up, Armonk, they're not lit, but your 143, actually, it has a light. I don't know if it's shining from the bottom up, but it's actually well lit, so you can see the 143. But again, if it's something that you all or the town would like to see just to help alleviate any purported concerns regarding traffic so that we're not going into the neighbor's driveway, again, that's something that we can entertain, and we can work with the building department to put a sign.
But there had been a sign, is that correct? Because the neighbor across the street complained about the lighting on the sign.
So I put up a sign last year. It was up for a couple of weeks when I understood that I can't have a sign, and I immediately took it off.
So that was put up without a permit?
Yeah, but I didn't know I needed a permit for that, and I took it off after I was notified that I can't.
And again, just not to make excuses for the client, but, you know, having been in business too, it's, these are growing pains too. I mean, it's a home occupation, so obviously, there have been some stumbling along the way, but again, I think they've since been corrected. So again, something like that, putting a sign, again, I understand it. I'm village council where I live, and I hear these as well from neighbors and residents, so I understand it.
Tom, was there anything you wanted to add, raise, question?
There was a sign posted on the interior of the property closer to the cooking studio. Is that still looking?
On the, on a tree?
Yes.
Yeah.
There is still a sign posted on your interior of a property. That still doesn't have permission to be there.
So it should be removed?
Should be removed as well.
Okay.
Can I just put something here right now?
Sure.
The applicant is here to withdraw an application.
Correct.
Which I'm all for. You want to withdraw, you want to restore it, that's fine. I think we're moving into a realm that should not be talked about tonight. I think we, we're moving into a realm that may require modifications to the special use permit, may require some other investigative issues to be with the neighbors. And in my opinion, these issues should be dealt with under another public hearing situation, to give the affected neighbors a chance to come in, pro and con, to state their feelings on it. And I don't think we ought to make any decisions tonight on this because it's not really what we're, what you're here for. You're not here for that tonight.
That's correct.
So my feeling is that, and I would be willing to make that motion, that we continue this with a public hearing to explore the issues that are being presented to us by affected neighbors, and issues that maybe some of the board members may have, questions to be answered. I know I have a few questions to be answered that I don't feel is appropriate to bring up at this time without a public hearing situation. So my, unless somebody has a better idea, I think that's the way we should go.
If I may, Mr. Jardine, just in terms of the suggestion at a public hearing, again, tonight's notice was for the patio, fence legalization. We are withdrawing that. There's been no, other than the July 23rd and subsequent July 24th write-up that we received from the building department stating that you need to remedy this with respect to the patio, and again, the complaint that we had more than five pupils. There's been no other alteration to that special permit. So in order to suispante on this board zone, because you grant the special permit and variances, area variances on this property, and as your council will say, those things run with the land, not with my client. So that being said, without, we actually, we're removing the very item that we're here for tonight, and that is the patio and the fence. We're removing it and putting it back to its original condition. We, the letters that we received, the emails that we received, again, they're not here this evening, but they submitted them for the record, and again, it's one individual, one generalized complaint about this particular business, this my client.
Well, there's been more than one individual. The building department has issued violations also.
There's been no violation, other than the July 23rd, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, but the written violations and the notice to cure were dated, and I have them with me, unless there were others, July 23rd and July 24th of 2019. Those are the only two. And my client was, that was the only, correct, correct, if I'm wrong, was that the only, the only thing that we received, and that was last year. So since then, it's been, again, the record I've seen in this case has been one individual that has been lodging these complaints. And quite frankly, when I read the submissions that have been sent by this neighbor, again, they're at hominum attacks on my client. They have no bearing on this board with respect to the opinions, or even factuals, the statements that are made in those emails with respect to water, or her children playing with other children. Again, it's almost bordering to harassment at this point with this particular individual.
Are you familiar with the website?
I am familiar with the website. I have seen the website.
Have you, have you seen anything in the website that might be interpreted in a way that's contrary to the conditions in the permit?
They, and you could speak to that, because other, if I recall, it's an Instagram post, the pictures?
Yeah, that was last... So there were pictures from my Instagram account, and those were the pictures that were submitted. And again, that was from last year. The website, I mean, the things that I put publicly there are the classes that I offer, and again, I do not have more than eight classes, and I don't start before 10 o'clock.
But you have to realize, and I'm sure you do realize, that we, along with the special use permit, we have continuing jurisdiction on this matter. Whether or not it runs with the land is material because we do have continuing jurisdiction. And if any member of the board feels that there is a possibility of renovation or adjustment to the special use permit, we have a right to request some kind of a hearing to do that. We don't necessarily have to rely on one neighbor's complaints. We don't necessarily have to rely on the building department's issues, or on the website that we've all perused regarding this school. But if we put it all together, and anybody has any feeling about some possible adjustments that need to be made, we have a right to do that. And I feel like I have, I have some issues that I need to get set in my mind before we continue with this, and I don't think it's appropriate to do it without having a public hearing so that we can get input from all concerned, building department, the board members themselves, the neighbors, both pro and con, and the applicant themselves. And I think it's only fair that that's the way we should go. And as I said before, and I'll say it again, I'm going to make the motion that we adjourn this now, or actually...
You would set a new public hearing.
Except your withdrawal of your visit case, let's set a public hearing for a continuing review of this special use permit.
If I, if I could understand, because this is where, I'm, again, I've been doing this a long time, and just my confusion in terms of the due process. So there's no violation against my client. I understand, I read your code, and it says about when, again, if the intent here is to revoke the special permit.
No, the intent is not to revoke, the intent is...
Okay, because that's why I'm reading your code, and it says here...
The intent is to review.
But that's, that's not what I'm reading in the code. That's why I'm a little confused because when I...
There is a provision in the code that has, provides for continuing jurisdiction by this board, and yes, the provision relating to revocation requires a public hearing. However, the only other, this board has to act through a hearing. And if they want to consider whether the conditions need to be amended or revised, the only procedure would be to set another public hearing on that matter. They couldn't do it suispante without giving you the opportunity, the public the opportunity.
I'm just confused in terms of what the due process, because again, there's no violation. I understand the jurisdiction, which I totally understand. My issue is, if we're complying with the special permit conditions that this board imposed back in 2018...
But you're not.
Well, that's, that's the issue, is whether there, the issue is whether there is a question that you are in compliance with.
As you know, Eric, that would be a town justice...
No, the town justice actually doesn't, you know, there's a question about whether the town justice and this board have jurisdiction over conditions in a special permit. It's not a code provision.
Right, but if the building inspector had an issue, obviously, we'd be fined, they'd be notice of violation appearance in order to remedy, 20 days. So again, it sounds like there's like almost two different jurisdictions. You have your board, and the building inspector, with town court. So it just, again, from my standpoint, it just sounds like, what is it that you're actually reviewing? And again, the building inspector has every right to come tomorrow, or next week, the following day, to look at the property, look at the business, and see if we are complying with those conditions. That I'm all for. But to open up a public hearing on a, on special permits based on a complaint of a neighbor, and...
It's not totally based on a neighbor's complaint. It's based on a neighbor's complaint along with the review of many members of the board, of the activities advertised on the website, and we would like to know what is actually going on there, and also whether or not the special use permit needs to be amended to take into consideration the actual events. And we, we issued a special use permit at the time, without knowing exactly what was going to happen there. We relied on the testimony that we heard.
Right.
Now, and it's up to us to, if we don't feel that that's exactly what's happening, to be able to amend this permit to accommodate or accommodate for the actual operation of this, of this business. It's bigger than everybody thought it was going to be.
Right, and we're, and we're saying to you that it never exceeded more than nine, if I'm mistaken, and we've acknowledged that. So I'm, I, we've been very candid, we said to you, we had nine students.
I'm not going to bring up the details, but there are other issues involved, and especially, another public hearing will bring them out. And it may end up that there are no changes to this special use permit, that we find out that, yes, everything is fine, continuing. But if we find that there are need, a need for changes, we have the right to do that. We also have to protect, this is a residential neighborhood. We need to protect the residents in this neighborhood. They are primary.
I understand that.
The business use is secondary, and it's up to us to protect that neighborhood.
No, no one's prejudging this. And we know your position. There's going to be, you will hear, a public hearing on this just to understand, and either ratify, amend, revoke, whatever, whatever comes from that review.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So is, I'm hearing, because again, my client has now has a successful business, and it's, you know, she does have certain vested rights with respect to this permit that now go on throughout the year in terms of her, she has a special permit, it's being granted by this board, and again, my, I understand under this public hearing, and now I hear that there's a possibility that may, this may be revoked. So...
Or it may not be revoked. There's a possibility both ways.
You know, all I just wanted to do was, is it, is it a public hearing for what? Just to revisit the special permit?
I started by saying, nothing has been prejudged, okay? We just want to review the elements of the special permit to hear once more from yourself, the applicant, and anyone else from the town who would like to speak on the matter.
We want to look at all of the conditions that were originally placed in the permit, including the ones that are included in the code itself.
Right.
Which would require, I think, something to the effect that it can't, can't be an operation that's more onerous or to the neighborhood than the existing, I...
Adaptable.
Exactly. But there are, there are built-in conditions in addition to the conditions we put in. So I think it's fair to say that we just want to take another look at it. It may be that nothing needs to be changed, but I think it's, it behooves everyone to have a proper public hearing that, where everyone can be heard that's interested, including your client, and just to determine that everything is as was anticipated in the original permit.
Don't lose sight of the fact that this board endorsed this application.
Understood. And again, I understand, and I don't want to take up time because I have other applicants here. It's just my own head of trying to visualize what this public hearing entails, because again, I'm used to, you know, when you have a special permit that you have problems with, building inspector goes out, violation's issued, we bring him back, but we're talking egregious, and because your code talks about, you know, in terms of material and essential conditions. And it doesn't provide a process, your code is pretty much empty in terms of what the standard is for what you're going to do. There's nothing in here about what the public hearing is going to be like, do I present witnesses? What, there's nothing in here to say what that procedure is, especially if it comes to revocation, which I hope is not the case, but there's no standards in here at all in your code for that. I understand if you want to take a look at conditions that are already in the special permit to make sure we're compliant. I understand that, and I would understand it more and appreciate it more if there was egregious violations by my client with respect to the school. But we've told you here tonight, we've been very candid that, yes, there were more pupils. I've read the complaints from the neighbor, and we're here tonight to tell you that we've since addressed those issues. So again, I understand what you want to do, Mr. Jardine, with respect to the public hearing, but I just need notice, just what is it that we're having a public hearing on, and what is it? Do I present witnesses, testimony? I just, like I said, it's a unique position.
Mr. Jardine, I think it's already told you what the purpose of, why are we doing this. So I think we're just going around and circling here.
I think you can present your witnesses. I would hope that people pro and possibly con to the applicant's position would be present, but we just want to get a better idea of what's going on there.
And I would encourage you all, to, since you haven't done so, to come and visit. I don't know if anyone has, but you should come and visit the site because it would prove you all, so you can see what really goes on there, and you can see the context of who is complaining about this. So I understand it. I don't want to take any more of your time. I appreciate it. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. I understand the applicant's concern. I, I understand the applicant's concern. I think the board's authority is both to set a public hearing based on your continuing jurisdiction just to review the conditions in the permit and to determine. However, if the board does contemplate that there is a material, and as Mr. Soretta-
Lino.
Lino said, if the board believes there could be a material and essential condition of the permit has been violated, I think the notice would need to include a specific statement that revocation could be a possible remedy. And the notice would have to state that. And I just want to make that, and I think the applicant's entitled to know whether this board would want to notice the public hearing for that purpose or solely for the purpose of a public hearing relating to review of the permit under your continuing jurisdiction authority.
Because they're, they are two different things. I mean, you want us to come back?
I think we should ask for the, for everything we can.
That's fine, and it doesn't mean that anything's going to be taken. I just want to make sure this board understands that, that the notice, for fairness to both the applicant and the neighbors, should state all the provisions that you're, you're seeking to get testimony under, so.
If, if there's a possibility that something could come up that could result in a revocation, you should know about it in advance and have the ability to, to deal with it if, if that situation arises. Not, not if something comes up, then we have to call another public hearing.
Fair enough, but I will say, up to this point, and what I've seen in this record and read and even the complaints from the neighbor, I don't see anything that I've read so far that warrants any type of drastic action, such as a revocation of a permit.
May I give you your opinion?
That's my opinion, exactly.
Nothing else will come up, but it, at a public hearing, we'll determine that ourselves.
Right. So when is a public hearing going to be set?
So the board would need to make a motion to schedule a public hearing under its continuing jurisdiction authority and under the authority of section four, sixty dash four thirty, and sixty dash four thirty M with respect to the possible revocation of the special permit. And you could schedule it for, it has to be on five days' notice. You can schedule for the next post, next meeting, and it would be acceptable as well.
We need to say revocation or modification or-
Right.
Review?
I think we both review under your, review and possible modification under the continuing jurisdiction or pot, or potential revocation under sixty dash four thirty M. And that's what the notice that would go out to the neighboring property owners would, would identify.
I'm going to make that motion provided I don't have to repeat it.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. And do we have a date?
Host, chairman.
Next meeting.
What's the next meeting?
Same time, same place?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Kingfisher Philanthropies.
No, you're not interested?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. We've scheduled, we've scheduled to keep.
My predecessor here. I understand I can plug in here. Do you know how to do it?
No, I'm trying. Done before, but it doesn't mean I can do it again.
Start with number one. You're good.
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep going. You tell me when to switch.
Okay, thank you. That would be great. I appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, for, for waiting for us. I'm John Kirkpatrick. I'm a city planner and land use lawyer. Been practicing throughout the Lower Hudson Valley and occasionally in front of your board for about the last forty years. And I'm here tonight representing Kingfisher Philanthropies, as well as the neighbors and founders of Kingfisher Philanthropies, Joe John and Laura Damaris. Now, this is a two-part application. So halfway through this, I'm going to ask you how you want to proceed. But to just set the stage, we have made application for a site plan for a preserve of this property. And it has been ruled by the development department and the building inspector that we would require a special permit as an institutional use. So the first part of our application to you is using your authority to reverse, affirm, modify, et cetera, any order from the building inspector. We would ask you to instead find that it does not require a special permit. And I'll go into more detail about exactly what I mean by that. But if, in fact, you agree that we require a special permit, then of course we're going to ask you for issuance of that same special permit and for the several variances that would be necessary because the particular category of special permit is for something quite a bit different than this open space use. It's for an institutional use which covers churches, clubs, monasteries, and the like. And we're just open space. So with me here tonight, Laura Damaris, one of the trustees of Kingfisher Philanthropies, also a nearby neighbor owned Deer Creek Lane, and Anthony Grau, Kellard Sessions, who's done all the engineering on this property. In fact, all the engineering before it ever got to be owned by Kingfisher Philanthropies. And Ellie Hendrickson from the Landscape Architects, and she has done all the design work for the proposed preserve. The application concept, what you're seeing here is a portion of a subdivision known as Brandywine Estates. It may in fact have come before you at some time or another because it was a long and painful process of approval of this subdivision. This is the three lots in the middle of it. Those three lots have been purchased, now owned by Kingfisher Philanthropies. There are lots off to the left, which are currently being developed with houses and are served by a common driveway. And there is a huge piece of open space, like forty-six acres, that is, has been offered for dedication to the town, would be owned by the town once accepted, and then would have an easement over it in favor of the Westchester Land Trust.
Could you, could you point out on the screen the, the actual lots that we're talking about?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't even, I didn't even follow your hand.
I'm sorry. I'm kidding myself. Okay.
There are three lots that you have, right?
This is one.
Okay.
Two.
Yep.
And three.
Okay.
And those, this is the acreage owned, that's the forty-six acres of that is-
And could you point the driveway that serves the lots to the south?
This is Cynthia Court, which brings you to the subdivision. This is a common drive here that was built for these three lots for construction. This is a access drive on this property, on one of our properties. And if this road here accesses the properties that are currently being developed by another builder.
Which, which one of those driveways is the one that has the gate on it?
This has the gate. This is leading up to the-
And what's up, up there now is nothing?
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry, what?
Up, if you go up in that, and road is nothing built yet?
Nothing built. That's, that's our-
That's all yours?
The land for the-
Okay, that's where, that's where you're proposing this, this land trust?
Your, your three lots are on either side of the dead road?
Um, no, basically, the property line is right here.
All right.
And so this road kind of follows it, and then it loops into here. It was meant to be able to, the houses where they have been built here, here, and next here. And so the topography is such that this was an access road to make sure you could get to the lot where it was built.
What's the acreage of each lot?
Um, this is just, just shy of four, shy of four, shy of five. So it's approximately just under twelve.
Two-acre zone?
Yes.
Yes.
So this was approved finally in 2009. And of course, there was a little economic difficulty starting in 2008. But with some cooperation from his bank, the developer did succeed in building Cynthia Court and the driveways and the utilities, the drainage, the drainage basins, everything that was needed. But then, once that was all done, there was no market, and everything just stopped. The Damaris, John and Laura Damaris, live nearby. They love to hike. So they became very familiar with these properties. And at some point, they went to the developer, Mr. Valardo, and offered to buy the properties, which they did. Now, this is still developed as you see it. There is a common driveway. There are drainage utilities, easements and the like on it. There's a water line, a fire hydrant, but no houses. Now, before I get further into the question of what kind of use this is, I'd like to ask Laura Damaris to come up and talk to you about their vision for the property. Can you switch to the next?
Hi, board. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to chat with you and tell you about what we have in mind. As Mr. Kirkpatrick has told you, we live not too far away on the other side of some Town of Newcastle-owned wetlands. And we moved to the Town of Newcastle twenty years ago. We actually lived in Mount Pleasant five years before that, Chapua Schools. And then we moved twenty years ago to our current home and raised our two children here. We do love nature, and we do love to hike. And one of the reasons we loved our property so much was it was, you know, sort of nestled in all of this gorgeous, you know, wooded area. And my children loved to, you know, hike in it and so on. When, um, when the building began, there was a lot of noise of tree cutting and explosions from excavations. And we would sometimes see wildlife running through our yard, leaving it. And we felt a little sorry that there wasn't something that we could do to encourage or to save that natural beauty that was in this extraordinary set of acreage that really spans all the way to the Sawmill. But then when we heard that Mr. Valardo was having some trouble, we reached out to him to see if maybe we could acquire the properties. And in fact, we could, with our dream being that we could return these properties that had been significantly damaged from the pre-construction process to, back to their natural beauty. When we went and looked at them, there had been a lot of tree clearing. There had been big holes left in the, in the property dugout for foundations, et cetera. So we've spent the last five years recuperating that, filling in the holes, carting away the debris, and trying to begin the process of healing the land. The land has some more work that needs to be done because when you do something like that to a property, you'll find that invasive species come in and, you know, there's all sorts of problems. So we've not only been working with our Landscape Architects to, and, and the excavation folks to fix the land, but also to reseed and to replant natives. We've been being mindful of, of the health of the land going forward and intend to continue to do so. That's all been a great joy to my husband and me. It's beautiful. If you haven't had a chance to walk in the land, I would love to bring you on a tour of it to show you. It's on a hill. It looks to the west. You can see the sunset from it. It's, when I walked through it, one of the first times I walked through it, there was a whole flock of bluebirds that just went flying. It's just really beautiful. So it is our intention, though, what we really like to do is not keep it to ourselves, but repair this land, keep it clean and, and beautiful, return it to its previous beauty, and open it to the public so that they can enjoy it as well. Part of the rejuvenation of this land has included adding a fence with a gate so that it was not a sort of an attractive nuisance to people to be going up that road that is existing there. Want to keep people safe there until we know it's ready to be open to the public and approved to be open to the public. We added a little parking lot that can fit three or so cars. We have proposed signage. We have rules that we would impose upon guests to the park so that the park or preserve would remain a healthy place for not only the people visiting it, but for the flora and fauna that make their, their homes there. So if you have had a chance to look at the website, you will see that we have a whole host of rules. No smoking, no hiking, yes, hiking, but no camping, no fires, that sort of thing, that we're proposing. The, the preserve would be open three hundred and sixty-five days a year from dawn to dusk. So, yeah, so that's the, that's some of our proposed signage. They intended to blend with the, you know, with the colors and the scheme of the, of the land there. So, oh, we have added two beehives on the property. There's a meadow on the property that had been where the, one of the, one of the lots had been excavated with the giant hole. So that, that's going to be a meadow until trees can grow back on it unless we keep it mown. It's the perfect place for bees to be because they're unmolested by cars and it's just a giant wildflower meadow. We've seeded it. So the intention for those honeybees are to, to encourage pollination of the native plants. We have listed this property on the Newcastle Pollinator Pathway as our own personal property is as well, with the hope that these will create a contiguous significant set of acreage that will return to the wildlife and the, you know, the pollinators who are native to our area. So besides, oh, and the, the honey that's generated by those beehives is donated to nonprofits. The most recent was the Mount Kisco Interstate Food Pantry and Mount Kisco Childcare Center. So the intention is that the honey that is developed in these hives will be donated to other worthy local organizations. So I'd be very happy, I could talk forever about this. I'm so excited about it, and I hope that, that this is our first step moving forward to the possibility of being able to open this really special plot of land to, to our neighbors who we've enjoyed, you know, living in this community for twenty-five years and are embedded here and are looking forward to staying.
Thank you.
So the, the question is, is this an institutional use or is it just a piece of open space? One of the things that we came across is this map from the town website, which is many of the other pieces of open land throughout the town. Ellie, can I ask you to do some of the pointing for me, please? So there is, for instance, the Choate Sanctuary, which is on one thirty-three. You'll see that up there at the-
Oh. The little green one?
Yes, the little green, exactly. Right, that's the one. Our property is pretty much directly south. If you see that little bit, you go down a little bit of a circle. That circle is Brandywine. And then our street comes off of that, and our property comes off of that. So that's the, that's the Choate Sanctuary, which is a property of Sawmill Audubon. All the way over, all the way over-
I'm sorry, what is it, what is it about that property that you want us to understand other, other than the fact that you're going to point out these?
Okay. What I'm going to say about all six of them
Okay.
is that they are nothing but a piece of open space. They have, I've included in the materials that I've given you a more precise description of all of them. But they are open land with trails, a sign, some benches. And one of them, the Marsh Memorial Sanctuary, has some parking in Mount Kisco. None of these in Newcastle have anything more than exactly what we're talking about here.
These are, these are privately owned?
No, these are all owned by not-for-profit organizations, either the Sawmill River Audubon Society or the Westchester Land Trust.
And what, I'm sorry.
The Westchester Land Trust.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
None of them have parking lots, you're saying?
None of them have parking, except Marsh Sanctuary, and its parking is actually in Mount Kisco.
Did I hear something mentioned about your proposal including a parking lot?
Our proposal will have parking, yes. None of those have parking. My point there is, there is no provision on those for people who come to visit. My point there is there is no provision on those for people who come to visit other than to park on the street. We're actually going a step further.
Do those properties have easements in favor of the public?
They are, they are owned by those organizations.
And how does the public access them?
The public is invited to access them. You can look on either the Westchester Land Trust website or the Sawmill Autobahn website, and they tell you how to find them, where you can park on the street, what you're welcome to do, whether you can have a dog there or not.
Westchester Land Trust, you say, has it in their website?
Yes.
I'm, I'm assuming then, then they also have easements granted to them.
Oh, good. I'm talking about properties that they own. For instance, the one that they own, which is at the end of Bittersweet Lane, they own that.
Are there any privately owned facilities?
Privately?
Like, what you're proposing here?
Ours is not privately owned. Ours is owned by a not-for-profit organization just like those.
When, when was the property purchased from the Villardos?
2015.
2015?
Yes.
And when did the applicant purchase the property?
Well, the Damaris purchased the property in 2015. They then transferred it to Kingfisher Philanthropies a year ago?
Yes.
Yes, a year ago. Created Kingfisher Philanthropies, a not-for-profit, and transferred the property into it so that it could be the steward of this open space preserve.
What vintage are these other properties? When did they come into existence or, it's not, not a trick question. Are they recent in terms of when they came into existence?
The Casper Preserve at the end of Bittersweet Lane is relatively recent. The others are all over the last 20 or 30 years with the creation of the Sawmill River Autobahn Society. No inspector may have a better idea than I do.
And how is Casper categorized in terms of a special use permit?
That's my point. None of these are categorized at all. They are simply existing. I've talked to the executive directors of both of those organizations, and they said the only time they've ever required any kind of municipal permit is when they put up a sign. Otherwise, they've simply been treated as a piece of open space. Now, I think you could legitimately find that if the body responsible for writing the zoning code, which is the town board, felt that there ought to be a category, they could certainly create one. But over the last few decades, these various open space parcels have sprung up around the town, owned by not-for-profit organizations, open to the public, very much to the benefit of the town, but they are simply open space.
Are they all in residential zoning districts?
Yes, they are. Every one of them. Some in two acre, some in one acre.
Town Board, Town Board's been busy. They just didn't get around. Can you go over the adjacent 46 or 43 or piece of land? Who owns that?
Sure. That, and, you know, typical of this subdivision, things are not finished. That is near as we've been able to understand in conversations with Westchester Land Trust. The intention is that the town will own that property and the Westchester Land Trust will have an easement over it and will be responsible for it. It's their intention to combine the governance of that 46-acre piece with the governance of their four or five-acre piece that they own directly at the end of Bittersweet. But they tell me that even though Mr. Villardo, the developer, has offered a deed to the town for the 46 acres, it has not yet been accepted by the town. So even though it shows up on the tax maps as being land trust, it apparently is in process. But the intention is that it would be a piece that is controlled by Westchester Land Trust. And likewise, it would be our intention, if we can get the necessary approvals, that we would work out a cooperative arrangement about the entire acreage.
What's your position on whether or not these lots should remain separate or should be merged into one lot?
We began trying to clarify everything about these. Ownership, the existence of the utilities, the driveway, which is much more extensive than is necessary, the water line, fire hydrant, all the rest of it. It became quite complicated, partly because this is a subdivision which is created as a cluster or conservation subdivision, and there are two homeowners associations, the HOA North and the HOA South. After a great deal of effort, we determined that it would actually be simpler if the three lots were kept in their existing ownership. It's going to be the same ownership for all three anyway. You have their responsibilities as members of the HOA, which means making sure that the easements and the water lines and everything are maintained. And it was just easier to leave it all alone.
Tom, do you want to tell us something about your determination and?
Based on our zoning codes, there is not a direct fit for this use. So the relative fit that I chose was based on a charitable organization, which pushed them into an institutional classification, which is difficult to apply here because there is no structure. And there's no occupants to say how many parking spaces you need, so, but that is the only fit the town has.
And taking the, the other view that it's just open space, that doesn't work for you?
It can be vacant land, but they're proposing a use of the vacant land. So that's why we're proposing a special use permit.
What, they've mentioned six other parcels that are, that are similarly situated. They say that there are, there are no permits for those. How are those properties different from this property?
They're relatively not different. They were mostly all originated back in the mid-'80s or earlier. So maybe the codes were not explicit at that point as far as adaptability. Or did they even try to put it, approach the town to what they proposed and just, it happened?
So they may not have approached the town at all?
Correct.
Whereas the applicant has approached the town for, for what?
I can answer that question.
Sorry, give me that, Ellie.
Since the Damarises have acquired the property, we have wanted to make some simple improvements, like removing part of the roadway to be able to return the property to its original state. And through that process, you know, and also in thinking about opening this up and putting some signage, well, as a landscape architect, I understand signage usually requires a permit. And so going down that road, well, what, does, does a resident, a residential property doesn't typically require a permit for a sign because a residential property doesn't usually need a sign? But this was going to be an open space, but they wanted to put, you know, signage for the open space on it. And so that's where we got into some confusion of, well, how do we go the right route without having the right parameters? And so we've gotten into, you know, from cleaning up the property, we've gone through every bit of permitting for being able to remove the original construction debris. We got permitting for that years ago. We did all of that work. And just in trying to do the right thing in the right course and make these improvements, it's been difficult because the prop, well, also because it's a conservation subdivision and there are easements on the property, which we will always respect. We've just come into a few snags because of, you know, trying to follow the rules. We're trying to figure out what they are.
It's more than part of a homeowner development, right?
Right.
So are you subject to certain restrictions of that homeowner development?
Yes, we're subject to them all. Essentially, the homeowners association requires, it's the HOA North in our case, it requires that these three lots and one lot across Centia Court are the members of HOA North and are responsible for our equal share of the maintenance of Centia Court and any maintenance that may be necessary of any of the easements on the properties.
And that's the only obligations that run to the homeowner association with respect to these parcels?
That's correct.
And there are no restrictions on use or ownership in any way?
No, these are single-family lots. They simply have to comply with them.
So they could be sold anytime for development?
Yes, they can. And of course, the market is much better now.
We're not interested in that.
No.
Not interested.
But, you know, it is a comparison, you know?
Right, it's true.
The open space is much better than three big, single-family houses.
If, if we were to determine, if the building inspector is correct in his interpretation and, and say that this is indeed an institutional use, what, if any hardships would that put on you and your, and your client?
Well, we simply have to go through a long series of proofs to you, which is no great hardship. I'm prepared to do it tonight if you'd like to. And we need several variances. This institutional use requires, in this particular case, a 20-acre minimum lot size. We don't have that. It has restrictions on number of people who can visit the property at any one time and number of people who can be there on special occasions. It has requirements for parking, which even though we're providing parking, we're not meet, we're not providing quite that much. There's a requirement that there be a buffer strip along all sides of the property that are adjacent to residential uses. And of course, this property essentially is a buffer strip. I think there might be another, but there are several variances that would be necessary in order for you to grant this question.
The access road.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. It also has to be located on a major or collector road, which it is, but I have an argument about that.
I see. I'm familiar with a lot of those requirements.
We've had that one before.
So another question, it may be better directed to our building inspector than to you, but, you know, to everybody. If we were to determine that, in fact, the building inspector is wrong and it should not be considered an institutional use, what detriments, if any, would there be to the town or the neighborhood or both?
Well, from our point of view, if you, if you agreed with us...
I'm closing to the mic.
If you agreed with us, then we still need to go for site plan approval from the planning board. So any of the issues about our relationship to the surroundings will be handled in that matter.
Okay. And the building department's issue, if we determine that it's not institutional use?
According to the code, if it's not a listed use, it's not permitted. So are they proposing a different classification that, where it would be permitted?
Right, the code... So then they can't do it at all. What you're saying, if we don't, we have to, we have to figure out something. This is, this has to have a name or a title or it has to be something where you can't do it at all.
It has to be applied to one of the permitted uses. If they're saying the one I chose is incorrect, are they suggesting one that's more correct?
Is there any more correct? I don't know the code by heart.
That's not the case, right?
The problem is there's no open space trail use.
Right, right, right. So going that route, I'm sure there's going to be some hardships involved, but would it be too great a hardship to go to the town board and petition them to create a use not just for you, but for the future? I mean, I, I understand it as, as, as we sit here and, and see all these cases that we see through the years, that we need something to, to hold on to, to, to determine if it's being used properly, if it's being, if it's not, to, to have something to judge by. And you just, you just can't say, just go ahead and do whatever you want to do. That doesn't fit, doesn't work. Maybe in, in the old days, when the other walking trails and sites were, were developed, maybe that went, went okay. But in today's day and age, we need to have something. And I'd like to find a, a, a use designation that would be the least problematic for the applicant and the town and, and the most beneficial for all concerned. And I, I don't, I can't think of one right now, but maybe someone around here can think of one.
Well, it, it was suggested to us that that was one of our options, is that we, we could make an application to the town board for a zoning amendment to create a new category. We decided, actually, this was easier. The reason being, if we decided that we wanted to create a zoning category that took care of all of those other open space parcels, because theoretically, they're non-conforming. If it has been determined that an open space parcel requires a special permit, say, then they don't have one. So now we have really opened a can of worms and we have a huge application for a zoning amendment. And I'm sorry, but it's actually easier to come to you. And if you have decided that we need a special permit, we're prepared to ask for one. We just don't really think it's appropriate.
Okay. Without a special permit, you'd be operating in, what would, what would you be operating in?
Well, it would be, it would be your determination...
Yeah.
...that a use such as ours is simply a piece of open space that is, does not meet the requirement of the zoning ordinance as a use. It's just open land. Just like I could own a piece of vacant land in the town now.
Be in violation of the code by using it then, if it's not supposed to be used?
Well, this is, this is your determination.
Eric, do you want, you want to add anything or?
No, I, I think you, you've hit the issue on the head. There is no specific permitted use for this type of, what the applicant is seeking, unfortunately. The building inspector's made a determination, it's a charitable type of use, and that's why the institutional use has been applied. I mean, with respect to the other properties, you know, they, they could be considered non-conforming or they may be considered in violation. I don't know. You know, I, I don't know if we want to go there. We're dealing with this application. As you know, there's no estoppel against the town that says just because you didn't require another property owner to get a permit means you can't require this applicant to get a permit for a similar type of situation. That's all I can add. It's really then up to you.
Well, I have, I have another question. Assuming that we agree with our building inspector and say it's an institutional use and we grant the necessary variances, and there are a lot of them that have to be granted, I understand that. And, and you get your approval and everything is fine. Some, some number of years down the road, and this runs with the land, some number of years down the road, this, this nonprofit dissolves, and now you have a piece of land with a bunch of variances on it that anybody can do anything with.
Well, no, this would be specific to the open space. We could, we could make the condition, the variance could be conditioned so that they only relate to the open space use of the property.
That's what I was concerned about because then you're opening up...
No, no.
...a whole big problem.
No, that's, I mean, any of the conditions that you grant are specific to a particular variance or a particular use. They can, they couldn't take these variances and then say, no, we're going to do, you know, even an institutional use that has a structure, then I would think you, they would have to come back to you for an amendment to the special permit at that point.
Yeah, but you couldn't take the variance away.
I think you could condition them upon the continuation of this particular use. Yes, I think, yeah.
Yeah, because if we go that road, that's definitely what we wanted to do.
Right.
Not that, not that I believe that this is going to happen, but to protect...
It's not, it's not a typical situation that you would condition it upon that, but in this case, I think it would be appropriate and I believe it would be upheld if you did.
Yeah, yeah, because you, you want to protect the town and the neighborhood from potential problem later on.
Right, you couldn't, you couldn't, you couldn't link it to the particular applicant, but you could link it to the continuation of that particular use of the property.
Use, correct, okay.
And, and we are happy to put a conservation easement on the properties.
Yeah, I think it, it's unfortunate, but our code is, is defective in a number of different ways. In one of the ways it's defective, it doesn't have a provision that deals with this particular use that you're applying for, the size of your property or, but codes... But codes can't do everything, so that's why we're here.
I've written a lot of them myself.
It appears the easiest route is to go for a special permit.
That would be correct.
And everything would be laid down and be legal and institutional use and that would be fine. And so we can do signage or whatever, parking.
The building department would be looking for assurances that this would stay as one parcel, not be segregated over time.
I'm sure the applicant would agree with that. It's the way to go.
Can that be done without a formal merging of the properties?
It could be contingent to your variances, that it has to be looked at as a three parcel unit.
Yes.
And condition as a permit.
So we would have to be extremely careful because there are a tremendous amount of variances involved and a tremendous amount of contingencies to plan for, hopefully not needing anything later on, but I would be open to that.
So what do we do tonight, other than voting on the determination of the building department? Is there more for us to do this evening?
You can make a motion. I think the applicant wants to present with respect to the special permit. Tom can correct me if I'm wrong. I think there were some additional items that the building department and the planning department wanted with respect to the special use permit at this point in time. We are not ready to address them tonight. Right. We can't grant approval on that.
So these six or eight things that they have listed here is incomplete as it relates to what you want to see? These variances that they need and...
They may be incomplete.
I think Tom would have to make that calculation.
Okay, so we're not there yet.
We're not ready to... And as you know, a special use permit, it's going to require, it's a type two, well, it's probably, it may be an unlisted action, it may be a type two action. That's something we'd have to determine with the planning department, so they would have to be secreted on. And then you always have to refer special permit to the planning board once there is an appropriate level of information, where you feel the application is clean enough to refer to the planning board. They're going to need to issue site plan approval anyway, so I'm sure they're going to want to put their stamp of approval on it and give you their recommendations. So there's no way they give an approval tonight? And I don't believe the building department is prepared to take the position that you have enough information to refer to the planning board tonight. So, but it's up to, you know, how you want to deal with it.
You can act on the interpretation and make a finding on that, on Tom's interpretation, and then carry over the applicant till the next year, till the next date, and continue their request for a special permit.
Right.
Is everyone on the board satisfied that they have? Let the record show there's no one in the audience to speak to this application. So we're ready to...
To make a motion to affirm the building inspector's determination with respect that the property, the proposed use of the property requires an institutional special use permit.
Second.
I'll second that.
All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Thank you. Hopefully see you next month.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I move that the board adopt the meeting minutes for the January 29, 2020 meeting. All those favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you, we're off.